I call this meeting of the Mount Vernon Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a form of board members is present. This meeting has been duly called. Those in this meeting have been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Motion to certify the agenda made by Robert, seconded by Scott, all four. That's seven oh. All right. Lord, thank you for bringing us here safely and pray that you give this board wisdom on our decisions and we pray God that you be with our teachers and our aides, all of our staff, everybody driving these school buses, folks that are doing things up here on this last week of school. Lord, just be with them, be with them during the summer, be with our kids this last week and help our behavior to be up on its best. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen. In the plegis.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Robert, I'm going to have him bring the flag down. The flag is by Board Josh here.
Let me do it that way. I'm not sure. I might not find my way here if I can't find the flag.
All right. Action items. Anybody here speak? Looks like we're good. So let's move into our action items. Item A, consider action to certify and approve the 2022/2023 allotment and TEC certification form in accordance with TEC 31.04.
So this is, Chandler's not here, she's still in a meeting right now, but asked me to share this. This is the form that we have to approve each year that says that with our instructional allotment from the state that we will only purchase TEC line material from the list of materials provided by the state is what that is. Just certify that that's what we do.
Just to confirm.
Yeah, that's right. Saying that we will do that. That's right, we will do it.
Any questions on that? I'll take a motion that we consider action to certify and approve the 2022/2023 allotment and TEC certification form in accordance with TEC 31.04.
Motion made.
Motion made by Leanne, seconded by Linda. All four. Seven oh. Thank you. Consider minutes for May 9, 2022, and May 13, 2022.
Have those minutes provided for you. We're just trying to make it where we didn't have so many for the June board meeting. We'll go ahead and do those tonight, so Jessica added those on there. Any...
Any questions or corrections on those? I make a motion, we accept those as printed, seconded by Josh, all four. That's a seven oh. See, consider approval of new desk, classroom chairs and tables from Hertz Furniture High School Campus.
This is the first time we've come with you from furniture in the last three years, I think at least, from high school. This is forced replacement and just trying to get some things that we need over there since above $50,000, need to bring to you for your approval. Just needed furniture equipment that we need from high school.
Any questions on that? What was that total number?
Fifty-eight, three sixty-three.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Brooks, seconded by Robert, all four. Seven oh. Item D, discussion and possible action to retain attorneys and consultants to assist Mount Vernon ISD in the review and processing of applications for appraisal value limitation on qualified property, Texas Tax Code 313.
If you remember from the last board meeting, we had to do the, have the same action item on the agenda for the Stockyard project, so this would be the same motion in regard for Loopin' is Solar One and Loopin' is Solar Two project to retain attorneys from the Powell Law Group and consultants to assist us in the application for the appraised value limitation for these projects.
So we, we're going to have a presentation down here on our information item, seven A, right?
Actually, it'll go, I think they'll do their presentation next on E.
On E?
Okay.
All right. So, need to act on this action here to retain attorneys and consultants to assist Mount Vernon ISD in the review and the processing of the applications for appraised value limitation on qualified property, Texas Tax Code 313.
And recommendations for Powell Law Group, for both projects.
Recommendation to make a motion that we use Powell Law Groups for Solar One, is it Lupinus Solar One LLC and Lupinus Solar Two LLC. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Linda, all four. Seven oh.
Thank you.
Item E, discussion and possible action to accept applications for appraised value limitation on qualified property pursuant to Texas Tax Code 313 authorize the Superintendent of Schools to review the application for completeness and submit the application to the Texas Comptroller of Public Accounts and authorize the Superintendent of Schools to approve any request for extension of the deadline for board action beyond the 150-day board review period as may be required.
Okay.
This is for Lupinus Solar One and Lupinus Solar Two.
So I think first, have them speak? Or Shelley, you? How do we do this?
So, Robert, I'll be, I can go ahead.
Okay.
So, by way of introduction, my name is Troy Reed. I'm with Ernst &amp; Young. I'm a manager with our property tax office based out of Austin, Texas. My client is Samsung Renewables, Sam Samsung that you see makes TVs and microchips and what have you. Samsung, they're developing, they've got about five projects in Texas that they're actively developing and then they've got a project here where it's actually two different solar facilities. One is going to be Lupinus Solar and then the other one will be Lupinus Solar Two. There are 200 megawatt and 300 megawatt facilities. Lupinus Solar, let me just get my notes right. Lupinus Solar Two is 300 megawatts, it's the larger one. Recently, they were able to, they've secured all the land that they need for both projects. They were able to get a little bit more for the Lupinus Solar Two project, that's why it's bigger from 200 to 300. A majority of it will fall within your school district. There'll be about 60 megawatts out of that 300 megawatts that will bleed into Sulphur Bluff ISD, but if you, I think you all may have the maps, the general direction of, you know, where the project's physically located. If development efforts go well and everything moves as planned, their ultimate goal would be to break ground sometime in 2024. And with the facility of this size, having both of them, what they'll try to do is get one done first and go to the second one right afterwards with the construction contractors. It'll take roughly about, you know, typically with a 200-megawatt facility, it's about 12 to 18 months, but something around the 500-megawatt is going to take around, you know, closer to two years. But like I said, they would anticipate, if everything went well, break ground at the beginning of 2024, hopefully, you know, in 2025, 2026 is when both facilities would be up and fully operational. There's a lot of developed things that go into development and that's just kind of why it's not going to be built immediately. There's still some things that need to fall into place, but they're very bullish on this project, that's why they, you know, have the size of close to 500 megawatts for both these facilities combined. And the investment is close to around $500 million. Is there anything else? I'll open it up for questions. I've, I've been doing renewables for 10-plus years and if you've got any questions, feel free to ask. I'm here as a resource, if there's any questions that you have or anything that you've heard or want to discuss, I'm here for you guys.
So the land acquisition's already taken place?
Correct. All land leases have been secured with local landowners and that was actually the Samsung team, they were down for, in April, for three and a half weeks finalizing those negotiations. So they've secured all land for all their projects throughout Texas.
So is this, is this public, this where it's going to go? Or is it going to be public after tonight?
The location?
Yeah, it's, it's going to be public after tonight. These are all public documents and then they're going to be uploaded to the comptroller's website and they're going to be, these applications that are in front of you will be, I would assume, if this application, if both these applications are accepted, once they're transferred to the comptroller's office, they'll be posted within probably 15 to 20, 25 days. So it's, for purposes, it's public, yeah. Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Reed? The presentation that some of you are looking at now, Ms. Shelley's going to go through that for us here in a second. Any other questions for Mr. Reed? At this time?
If any further questions.
You might have some here as Shelley goes through.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Mr. Powell, Shelley?
I would like to impose on you, if I may, for a little housekeeping matter before we get too far into Shelley's presentation. I know you all have done this before and with your permission, I'm going to come over to this side of the dice and just start and ask each board member if they would complete the acknowledgement of individual conflict of interest disclosure. Obviously, if we've got an ownership interest in any of the property that might be subject to a lease related to this transaction, or if we've got an ownership interest in the actual development, we would want to disclose that. If not, we're probably in a position where, where we would put no conflict. So...
So this is information on number seven, we're going to go ahead and continue, we're doing it just so we're acknowledging it's number seven on the agenda.
Shelley likes to do these prior to getting too far into the process and then with your permission, if I could do a roll call when we finish this process, we'll, we'll do that as well and ask you to respond, either conflict disclosed or no conflict.
And then there are maps behind the conflicts of interest that show where the projects will be located.
Is this covering both?
I guess. One for each. Our goal is to create a paper trail that'll be audit proof. Knock on wood, we've paid that so far. And that's also the reason for adopting the separate agreement retaining council, so that you've got an agreement that corresponds to each separate project as well. So, all right. I think everyone has answered the same on each of the two disclosure sheets, so I will, with your permission, I'll do a quick roll call and just ask you to respond accordingly, if that's all right.
Roll call, yes.
Yes, sir. And I'll, I'll start with, with you, Mr. Sanders. Aaron Sanders.
No conflict.
No conflict.
Josh Jordan. Brooke Russell.
No conflict.
Robert Taylor.
No conflict.
Scott Newsom.
No conflict.
Linda Baird.
No conflict.
Leanne Ramsey. Thank you for allowing me to impose on you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right. Good evening, Board of Trustees. Dr. McCullough, my name is Shelley and I'm with Powell Law Group. I'm the Director of Economic Development. Behind you, I'm going to go through the PowerPoint presentation, but in your blue folder, you have a hard copy of that presentation on the right-hand side. Troy covered a lot of this in terms of the project overview, but just to go over it again, this is a two-phase project. There's Lupinus Solar and then there's Lupinus Solar Two. Lupinus One is a 200-megawatt capacity solar farm across about 2,500 acres. Lupinus Two is a little bit larger, it's 300 megawatts across 2,500 acres. The total investment for Lupinus One is $245 million and the total investment for Lupinus Two is $294 million. They are proposing the qualifying time period to start on January 2 of 2025. That's the time in which they can start construction and meet their minimum investment of $10 million for each project within, within that timeframe. For, on the paper, they have construction starting on January 1 of 2027 with 250 full-time employees over the course of one year and they plan to complete that construction within a year and so commercial operations would start at the very end of 2027. And with that, they are committing to one full-time qualifying job and they are requesting that the board consider a waiver of the job creation requirement, just as they had asked the board with the Stockyard Solar Project. Troy had mentioned that they may do construction earlier and finish that sooner. The reason why it's on the paper as it is is because with the program sunsetting, the comptroller is not going to allow anybody to push the project further into the future. So should there be any delays, this gives them adequate buffer to be able to... Yes, sir.
Question in regard to the timeline. I understand the dates that they have here and what he said, will the board have to take any other action if they start earlier or is that just something that they can do?
Yes, sir. If they need to, if they are starting construction earlier, they will need to file an amendment with the comptroller.
But not with the board?
It also ultimately comes to the board and the board needs to approve that amendment. Yes, sir. Great question. So here we have the value limitation period starting on January 1 of 2028. Again, if they start construction earlier, this could also be, this could also start earlier. The value limitation for each project is $20 million, so collectively it's adding $40 million to your MNO tax base and roughly $540 million to your INS tax base because you get to tax fully on the INS side. So here you've got the location of Lupinus One. If you, on the left-hand side, you see overall where Hopkins County is and then you see where Mount Vernon ISD is and it's located in the north, northwest portion of your district. And then on the right-hand side, there is a zoomed-in map of that location and the project boundary. So the project site is, so where you see the yellow, the yellow outline, that is the entire reinvestment zone. Both projects will be contained within that reinvestment zone. That red outline, that, the, the right half, that is the portion that is Lupinus One. And then on the next side, you'll see that the blue, the blue left half is the portion that's Lupinus Two and you can see that it's slightly larger in terms of its space.
So both, both projects are about 2,500 acres together, right?
Correct. And then on this one, for Lupinus Solar Two, right there at the top left, there, Samsung secured additional land that's in Sulphur Bluff ISD, but it's, you know, their estimates right now would be about 60 megawatts would go right there and Samsung, it just doesn't make any...
This part right here, so we're talking about...
A little, yeah, I think it's right, right in that area where the bluff is actually and Samsung is pursued not to move forward with a 313 incentive application on Sulphur Bluff just because the numbers, it just doesn't make sense for a project at 60 megawatts. It just doesn't make sense to do it there. So that's why they've chosen not to approach Sulphur Bluff with, with an application just because there's just not enough investment in that district to, you know, have it go forward with an application.
Okay, so here we have the estimated financial impact. Keep in mind, this is preliminary and this is based on the investment schedules that were provided by the applicant. You can see in column A, that is the agreement phase, column B is the corresponding school year, column C is the corresponding tax year, column D is the project value. Column D is what you would get to utilize for INS tax purposes, it's that full value. Column E, it takes into consideration the $20 million value limitation and you see that for L1 through L10, it is a 10-year value limitation period. And then after L10, MVP1, that's where it goes back up to what its appraised value will be at that time. So after the limitation is through and over, you still have about $49 million on the ground that you get to tax fully on for INS purposes as well as for MNO purposes. If we go over to column H, that is what they would be paying for taxes, in MNO taxes, if there were no Chapter 313 agreement. Column I is what the taxes they will be paying with the value limitation. So the difference is 13.3 million versus 3.9 million. Now, that is about $9.3 million savings for the company, but a portion of that is going to be shared with the district and that is through the revenue loss protection payment, which is in column K, that is estimated to be roughly $2.1 million, or I'm sorry, $2,017,066, so a little bit under $2.1 million. And that is accrued during the first year of the limitation period, which is tax year 2028. Should the project come online sooner and that limitation period start sooner, that payment will be accrued sooner. And then in addition to that benefit, there is the supplemental payment benefit, which is $100 per ADA per year, starting from your qualifying time period through the third year of the maintained viable presence period, so the third year after the value limitation period ends. So in this projection, it is, we are looking at 16 years of supplemental payments and that is estimated to be roughly $2.3 million. That's looking at your prior year ADA. You get to decide whether or not you want that number to stay consistent or if you want it to fluctuate because you had to pay student population growth. That's a decision that you get to make. And then the school finance consultants will look at a historical trend. They'll look in the past decade to see what that trend looks like to help you make a, make a more refined decision in that. So then overall, the tax benefit to the company is $5 million and the benefit to the district is just a little bit under $2.4 million, or I'm sorry, $4.4 million for this project, Lupinus One. And then if you go to columns N and O, that is looking at your INS impact. You've got some, you've got different maturity dates for your, for your different bonds and so you're looking at with this project alone helping to offset 12% of your INS debt over time. Does anybody have questions relate to the first project? Roll on to the second project. Again, this is very similar to the first project, it's just higher in its investment amount. If we can jump over to column K, that is your revenue loss protection payment, just under $2.5 million. Your supplemental payment is the same as it was in the previous schedule, which is roughly $2.3 million. And then the company tax savings for Samsung is just under $7 million. And then this project would help to offset 15% of your INS debt. Keep in mind that because they're doing two phases or they're having, they're submitting two project proposals, that offers you that additional supplemental payment. So you're getting two supplemental payments instead of one and then on top of the last project that you accepted, that's a total of three supplemental payments per year that the district would be entitled to receive. Keep in mind that the maximum is $100 per ADA. We cannot go above that maximum in any given year of the agreement. So here is the application timeline. Right now, we are at the end of May. We anticipate that sometime in September, the comptroller is going to issue their economic impact analysis study and that report is the ultimate green light for this project to move forward with the rest of the process. They need to make a decision that this project is beneficial to the state of Texas as a whole. So with that report, it's a pretty lengthy report that they provide, looking at the economics for the state of Texas and in conjunction with that, we'll have the school finance consultants at Education Service Center Region 12 prepare a full school finance report for the district that looks at the financial impact to the district. And then this is overall about a six-month process, so we plan on coming back probably sometime in November for the board to make the ultimate decision. At that point in time, we will have a very detailed report called the Board Findings of Fact. It's about a 100-page document that we will present to the board and that is a document that presents all of the due diligence that's been completed in the past six months for the board to be able to base your decision on whether or not you want to enter into a proposed agreement between the district and Lupinus One and Lupinus Two respectively. The application fee that the company paid to the district, that will be used to pay for the, our legal fees as well as school finance consulting fees, so no money comes out of the district's pocket for your, for our representation of the district in this. So just, these are just some additional notes. We've gone over all of this, but some talking points that you can share with, with your taxpayers for you to help educate your taxpayers if they do ask questions regarding the Chapter 313 process. The district is adding $20 million to your MNO tax base. It's fully taxable on the INS side and keep in mind, that's for each project. At this point, you're not making any decision that will obligate you to an agreement. That's six months down the road. Tonight, you're just saying, yes, we want to start the process, we want to go through the due diligence, we want to have the comptroller look at the application and find out what they have to say. The company must hold the school district harmless for any MNO revenue lost as a result of the agreement. That's where your revenue loss protection payment comes into play that we discussed earlier. And then ultimately, this project ends December 31 of 2022. The comptroller has posted on their website that any application submitted after June 1 of 2022 is not guaranteed to cross the finish line. So that's why, you know, we're, we're trying to wrap this up before the comptroller puts a hard stop to it. And then with that, I just want to give opportunity for you to ask any more questions that you may have that came up over this time. Thank you so much.
So it's two projects, but it's on one tract of land, so why is it in two projects? Is it because of a timeline, they'll do one and complete it and they do another one?
No, it's, it's a good question. So in, in the development of this project, one of the big things with renewable projects is that you're going to have to have buyers for the power, right? So if you have 500 megawatts of power, you might not have a buyer out there that, when you go to market these projects, right, that needs 500 megawatts of power, right? Power roughly 80,000 homes, but the biggest thing is they're trying to get a power purchase agreement for these projects. Well, if they go out there and they market them, you know, let's say Home Depot's, you know, I think they have a power purchase agreement with another one of our clients, right, where they'll agree to buy the power over a certain period of time. Well, it's just a lot easier bifurcating two projects, 200 megawatts and 300 megawatts because then what they could sell is, hey, you're going to get the power from Lupinus One right here, here is your 200 megawatts, right? Or Lupinus Two at 300 or, or what have you. It's a lot easier to market the projects at the smaller sizing rather than have a project that's capable of doing 500 megawatts and then going out and trying to find, find a buyer for that entire amount of power. So it's just simply, based on their experience, what they see in the market, it's easier to eventually sell the power at the lower size and that's why they've split the, split the project up into, into two separate SDV. the project up into, into two separate SPVs, but in a nutshell, that's kind of what's going on. It's just a lot easier just to market, market the power to sell it.
In what ways will this benefit? You know, this is on the northern side of Franklin County, so for our people, taxpayers on the northern side of the county besides the landowners here, what ways will this project benefit them?
So during construction, you're going to have roughly two hundred and fifty, possibly even more, construction jobs, right? And they're going to need fuel, they're going to need diesel, they're going to need housing. There's going to always be a need for local services that the project needs, whether it's maintenance and, you know, any operational, let's say, activities like mowing or anything like that. Renewables by nature, there's not a many moving parts. That's why there, there isn't as many full-time jobs. It's industry standard for like, you know, for a, a size of a solar facility up to three hundred and fifty megawatts to have one permanent full-time job on each project. This one at, you know, roughly five hundred megawatts are going to have two people there full-time, but there will just be local goods and services where if they need to, to, to maintain the project during its lifetime, that they're going to be buying locally. And then also opportunities for just general maintenance around, in and around the facility to, you know, hire local and, you know, just have those opportunities available.
Is there a way to provide electricity for the neighbors of this project?
I'll say probably, we wouldn't know that it was coming from this. The, the power gets put into the grid and at without, and I'm no engineer, but it's, it's electrons that are getting put up on the, on the grid itself and it's just going through the different transmission lines. So we don't know if the power that's, that's say local is coming from these facilities and it goes to the, the greater Orkut network and then how it's distributed. I mean, it's all mix and match. I mean, you're going to have your natural gas-fired generation plants that is, that electricity is electricity, right? Same as with the solar. So it's all just goes to the grid and gets distributed and I can't specifically say that, hey, these lights are coming from these two projects, you know, from the northwest to here. There's just no way of knowing. Is that answer your question?
Kinda. Probably no benefit to the people that's around this. You know, I mean, in my mind, I'm thinking, how do we help our, you know, what, what benefit can Franklin County get? If y'all come here, because, you know, yes, fuel, but one place, we don't have many places to sell fuel, so one place is going to benefit maybe off of the fuel. I've seen other projects and I'm going to say ninety-five percent of the labor force is going to come from somewhere besides here. So I'm thinking, what way can this project benefit our people in Franklin County? They're going to deal with the repercussions of.
Yeah, I, I think what I've seen.
There's going to be road damage and different things, so.
What I've seen in my experience, right, is with projects like this, you're definitely going to have some road usage, right? And these companies, the, they'll, they'll enter into a road use agreement with the local county where the road is going to be in as, as like or better condition than it was found, right? So a lot of the times what you see is that Samsung knows how much traffic that they're going to have to bring in here and they go in there and then reinforce the roads, they make the roads wider, they clear out things that, let's say, you know, maybe the road wasn't as a good condition, but they need it to be in really good condition to, you know, as these trucks come in with solar panels on it. So you'll see some improvement in the road conditions for sure. And then just, you know, like I said, the local goods and services during construction period and then also during the maintenance and operations of the facility.
Kind of the follow-up, what you're saying is there not going to be like a substation set on northeast of the county to where the solar transmits to the substation that therefore transmits to homes in Franklin County?
Right, I mean, there, there could be, but I, for me, there's just no way of, of knowing at this point where the electricity generated from these facilities, where it will go.
So we're not really making any decisions tonight.
You're, you're making decision on.
Accept the application.
Right. So I need a motion to accept the application for appraised value limitation on qualified property pursuant to Texas Tax Code three thirteen, authorize the superintendent of the schools to review the application, the application for completeness and submit the application to the Texas Comptroller Public Accounts and authorize the superintendent of schools to approve any requests for extension of the deadline for board action beyond the one hundred and fifty-day board review period as may be required.
Like, can we echo both at the same time or do we need two different motions for each project? Two motions? Okay. So we need to do one for Lupinus Solar one and then we'll do another for Lupinus two.
Okay. Can you explain the extension portion?
One hundred and fifty day.
Yeah, I don't understand.
Yes, I can explain that.
Yeah, I don't understand that.
So let me go back to this application process slide and it'll be more clear. So when the comptroller, it receives the application after the board votes to accept it, they're going to review it and then at some point in time, probably a month or so after tonight, they're going to issue what's called a completeness letter. And that completeness letter starts the official one hundred and fifty-day time clock to complete this entire process. So we have an entire one hundred and fifty days from the day of completeness and then for the board to vote to enter into an agreement. Should we need to go beyond that one hundred and fifty days, Dr. McCullough would have the delegated authority to be able to, to extend the one hundred and fifty days and that just keeps the ball rolling. There is no, there's not really any penalty, but that is a hard timeline that the comptroller keeps track of to, that we don't exceed the one hundred and fifty days or if we do exceed it, then there is clear documentation that it has been extended.
How often have you seen that happen?
Um, it, it's happened quite a bit, starting last year to this year. You know, probably twenty percent of our projects ask for extensions simply because there are, there have been multiple amendments throughout the process or they want to change the project size, the project scope, where the project's located. It just depends on how complete that initial application is. Given that Samsung's already secured the, the, the project site that they want, I don't anticipate that many changes, but.
No, and I'll just comment on this, right? So this is when you get the completeness letter from the comptroller, that says they've conducted their administrative review and then what they'll do is they'll take ninety days to certify the application, right? And then what they, what they state is within a hundred and fifty days. So once you get that completeness letter, they want the process completed in a hundred and fifty days. If you go past it, you have to file an extension. But like Shelley said, if the application is accepted, comptroller's going to take about thirty days to issue a completeness letter. There's only two hundred and twenty-two days left in this year, right? And we cannot have this bleed over to next year because the state legislature says, hey, if you do it next year, it's, it's done and dusted, you can't do it. So this, as far as for, for this purposes, it's just kind of, I don't think that there's a possibility of us having an extension on this because we simply just don't have the time.
It's supposed to be about, what, about a thirty-day extension at the longest, if any?
Sure.
Yeah. So, right, because we anticipate wrapping this up in November, the most time that we can have after that is December, until December thirty-one of two thousand and twenty-two.
Yeah, and what I've seen in the past is, yeah, there's, you know, during that timeframe of November, December, that there could be some board meetings that get pushed out because of the holidays, right? And then so what applicants have done is it had an extension of time, right? Well, since we know that nothing exists after January first of next year, right, there's not, not going to be any of that. So I think both myself, my client, is going to work as hard as possible with the district to, to get it completed in this calendar year. So for the purpose of the one hundred and fifty days, I don't, I don't foresee an extension request.
Okay, now I may have a motion that we accept the applications for Lupinus Solar one LLC. Motion made by Leanne.
Second.
Second by Scott. All four. Seven oh. Got that ruled?
Yes.
Okay. Need a motion for, do we accept the applications for Lupinus Solar two?
Robert.
Made by Robert.
Second.
Second by Brooks. All four. Seven oh.
Thank you.
Information Adams.
We've already done A with the, with not the conflict of interest. B, the next regular, the next regularly scheduled board meeting was supposed to be, I believe, Monday, June thirteenth. Need to move that to Thursday, June sixteenth, if possible. I had a superintendent meet that Monday. Is that doable? Doable for everybody? June sixteenth, for the.
I think so.
Yes, it was a Thursday. Yes. Same week, just move from a Monday to a Thursday.
Okay. Personnel report?
Have a list of five employees based upon your, allowing me the opportunity to hire them before the board meeting. Have Adam Terry, high school life skills, Casey Woods, high school English, Randall Sanders, high school math, Tina Thomas, seventh grade ELAR, and Willow Burnell, Burnall, high school English as well.
Make sure I read this right that we're going into.
Yeah.
Six seven.
Number nine.
Yeah. So the board will now convene in a closed session for personnel matters pursuant to Texas Government Code, section five five one oh seven, board.
I appreciate it. Thank you all so much. Thank you. George. Couple things. Five five one oh eight seven and, uh, Will.
Five five one oh eight seven, five five one oh seven.
That's a five fifty nine. In the PM.
Okay.
Board convenes back into open session at seven thirty-six. At this time, we have one item.
Coming out of.
Coming out of executive session. One action item here, so at this time, I need a motion that we do a one-time COVID relief payment in the amount of sixteen hundred due to the impact of COVID nineteen to all existing employees of Mount Vernon ISD employed as of July one and be applied to their July paycheck.
Make sure it's July one of two thousand and twenty-two, please.
July one of two thousand and twenty-two. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Motion made by Brooks.
Second.
Second by Linda and Robert and Leanne and Josh and myself and Scott. All four.
And we have.
Seven oh.
Staff Mount Vernon ISD, thank you for doing so.
Any further business?
No, sir.
Did you, oh, you were going to say anything about the other?
Oh, sorry. Oh, thank you. Sorry, sorry, sorry. I didn't, I didn't do with the numbers. I don't have the numbers in front of me. I do want to say at the, here before the meeting's over, I do want to say thank you to all the staff of Mount Vernon ISD. We, we did get results back today from STAR tests and last week's VOC. Scores are really much better and doing some great things. We will put those scores out here as soon as we get them all put together. But again, just want to publicly say thank you and thank you to staff and students and parents and for the hard work that you did and we appreciate it very much.
Seven thirty-eight PM, this meeting is adjourned.